Our city attorney, Mr. Radovich, will not be with us this evening. We do have a, dare I say, replacement city attorney joining us. We assume he's en route. We can and will begin without him. It is now the bewitching hour. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to City Hall for tonight's regularly scheduled City Council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Chuck Brown. Mike Bruno.
Here.
Don Cummings.
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan.
Here.
Dean Kilberg.
Here.
Craig Malandra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Mary Seino.
Here.
Tom Simonian.
Here.
Don Singer.
Here.
Mr. Brown did email me earlier this week that he would not be joining us tonight, so hopefully he's tuning in from home and doing well. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would like to ask our dear, dear friend, Dale Warfel, to please lead us in the pledge.
(Pleading) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Warfel. We have two important appointments to consider this evening. The first appointment, under item 3A, is to consider Jennifer McMahon to the Fire and Police Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Singer, seconded by Alderman Marx. Ms. McMahon is not with us this evening for the simple reason that she is also the Assistant City Administrator in the beautiful town of...
Warrenville.
Warrenville. So she's at the Warrenville City Council meeting. Can you imagine? However, I did have the pleasure of speaking with her. Chiefs, she comes very highly recommended. She will serve extraordinarily well, and that fulfills our responsibility on the commission. So, any questions regarding Ms. McMahon's nomination? If not, we do have a motion and a second. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our second item of business, item 3B, is to recommend the mayor's appointment of Mr. Tim Lynch to the Economic Development Commission.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Singer, and Mr. Lynch is with us this evening. Mr. Lynch, if you could, join us at the podium. Now, all of you have Mr. Lynch's application and credentials on file, and I'm certain all of you would agree that his credentials are indeed impressive. He shared with me earlier that your first career in the retail industry was bagging groceries.
Bagging groceries at Jewel Food Stores, yes. And then forty years later, I've been through a lot, but I started out, obviously, in a local level and had the privilege of doing a lot of different things in that organization. And from in-store to multi-unit support, all the way to national support in the corporate level in Boise, Idaho, and Eden Prairie, Minnesota, where I was responsible for the support of up to 2,400 stores across the nation.
No kidding.
So, it gave me a real opportunity that not a lot of people get, and I'd like to use whatever I can from my experiences to help with the Economic Development Council. So, I'm privileged and very happy to be here. I was a little surprised when I was, you know, accepted, my application was accepted, and next day I read in the newspaper where Ellen DeVita's leaving. I was hoping it wasn't a personal thing. It sure as me it wasn't. So, but anyway, I look forward to serving on the commission.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Lynch? He's a proud resident of the First Ward, living over near the high school, and I learned that you have a granddaughter.
I have a granddaughter, yes.
Two and a half years old. You're heading to Disney World in a couple of weeks?
Yes. So, my wife and I are, we're empty nesters, and we have, it's my stepson and her son live a block away.
You're not really empty nesters, then, are you? They live a block away.
And, yeah, and we have dogs, too, so, no.
Ah.
Yeah. So, I have dogs, I should say. But, anyway, so, they live a block away, and my granddaughter is two and a half years old, and we're taking her to Disney World in two weeks, and it should be a lot of fun.
It should be a heck of a lot of fun. True or false, eggs never go in the bottom of a bag?
After your first two weeks of bagging with as many complaints as you'll get, yeah, you'll learn that they don't go in the bottom, so.
Got that, Bruno?
Even if it's the only thing in the bag.
Then you don't ask for a bag.
Yeah.
You don't get plastic. This is California.
Don't start that.
Don't start that. Is that still an issue?
Well, yeah, it's, I just learned that Algonquin is, they didn't pass a law, but they're having a, getting all the retailers to chow in and put signs on the doors, bring your own bag, day or week, or something like that.
Oh, okay.
To kind of promote it. I guess it's probably the first step towards that.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. It'll be coming.
What do you think of that, Chief? Chief Olson, you against plastic bags?
What are you gonna pick up the dog poop with?
Your microphone's on, Mr. Simonian, by the way. Mr. Lynch, again, welcome. We do have a motion, and we have a second. The motion by Marx, the second by Singer, all in favor of appointing Mr. Lynch to the Economic Development Commission, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And thank you again, very much.
I'm at it.
Ellen, thank you. Item 3C, ladies and gentlemen, to recognize Esda Volunteer of the Century, because he has served almost a half a century, Dale Warfel on thirty years of service.
Amazing.
Dale, come on up to the podium, big guy. We know how you love to speak.
Oh, yeah.
You obviously have friends and colleagues, but you also have wife and son, so please introduce them.
My wife in the back corner, Babette, and then my son, Eric, and my other son had to work today.
How's Kev doing?
Doing pretty well.
Awesome.
Yep.
Eric, how are you doing?
Peachy.
Peachy. You were sitting next to Mom earlier, and you're moved. What's that all about?
Mrs. Collins is sitting next to me.
Oh, Mrs. Collins is like the real power, isn't she?
Yes. Your second mom.
Yeah, oh, man. Mine, too, as a matter of fact. And Babette, of course, you've been serving with distinction as well.
Not anymore.
No, I know, I said were, as well. So, just one person in the house now?
Oh, Kevin.
Well, yeah, but one person in the room, so.
Yeah.
Thirty years, dude. I was a junior in college.
Now you're making me feel old.
So, what was the first vehicle you drove when you joined Esda? Don't tell me it was a Schwinn.
Um, it was a Camaro Berlinetta.
A Berlinetta?
Yes.
Do you know what that is?
Uh-uh.
Is that a domestic car?
No, it was a Chevy Camaro Berlinetta. It was in, like...
You're cruising around in a Camaro?
Yes, I was. T-tops, the whole nine yards.
So, you're out storm chasing in a T-top?
It would've been nice, but I was told no.
Oh, I see. And you've seen a lot of changes?
Yes.
Extraordinary changes.
Some for the good, some I wish we wouldn't have done, but it's changed.
Yeah? What's the most, what's the most memorable experience you have?
The most memorable one was with the, I think it was the Labor Day storm over on Route 31, and we had wind bursts come through.
That was not long ago.
That was a long night.
Yeah.
Yep, long night.
So, storms roll in, storms are brewing, you're already on duty.
Yes.
So, that night, you were already prepared, ready to go.
Yes.
Did you have any inkling at all you'd be all night?
Uh, no. At the time, Betty Collins was out there, was in the office, and she called. I was calling her, and she asked how things were going, and I said, "It's not good. It's gonna be a long night now," and trees were down along 31, and Fargo, it was just like a disaster zone went through.
Yeah, I remember that.
And it was, that was my most memorable thing in the city here, that happened. There's been a lot of other ones, but that was the most. It seems like always that side of town is getting nailed more than any other part. Yeah, it was pretty...
Got that, Tom?
I got it.
Now, for those, for those watching at home, and as you know, a lot of people do tune in.
Oh, yes.
It's not just storms.
No. We do festivals. Swedish Days is our biggest event, and that's where I have to, the people behind me, the members, all the countless hours that we put in during the week of Swedish Days.
Right.
And it's amazing that you can get a volunteer to sit there, from starting at nine o'clock in the morning, listening to my briefings, and at four o'clock in the afternoon, you're going home, and it's one of, usually at Swedish Days Parade, it's ninety plus degrees.
Always.
And we're out there doing it for the citizens, which is pretty amazing. Without these guys, it's, glad to have them.
No question. You're frontline. You're the true first ambassador that people oftentimes have the pleasure of working with, whether it's telling them they can't park there, delivering the bad news.
Correct.
Most people are pleasant.
For the most part, except Sunday mornings when...
Oh, yeah.
...you're interrupting their way of going to church. They always go the same way, and today, they're not gonna go that way, and...
You should wear a collar, just...
Yeah.
Go over well, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah, that'd be pretty interesting.
Christmas walk?
Christmas walk.
Is it more difficult on the cold nights or the hot ones?
Hot ones.
Really?
You can only take off so much stuff.
Please, these are, this is being broadcast live, Dale.
Yes, it is.
There are FCC rules that, this is not the Kardashians. It's like, holy god. So, you'd rather have it cool than hot?
Cool than hot. It's much easier, and then when it's cool, you don't have to worry about storms rolling in. Festival of Vine, we've had very...
Hotter?
And some very chilly nights, and some nights, it's raining and thundering and lightning, and it's, Festival of Vine is one of the most interesting festivals that...
Do continue. Why is that?
It's just, the people that come out there and wanting to know, oh, what's the best place to eat, they always come up to one of us or one of the...
You always answer with, well, what are you in the mood for?
Exactly.
Smart move.
You don't wanna make anybody mad.
Yeah, yeah. What is your favorite place to eat, Dale?
Ken Oles.
John, help me.
Yep.
They feed you well, don't they?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Lee's good.
Yes.
And she takes good care of you, I know that.
Oh, yes, they do.
As well as she should. That's awesome.
Yep.
So, you've obviously provided not only wisdom, but leadership to others who have joined Esda. What's your, what's your message to anyone else considering volunteering their time, particularly in the capacity you do?
You have to have a wife that's understanding that there are some anniversaries, you just sort of don't make it home until way late at night because you've been out on storm watch.
Babette?
Um...
Really?
There's a, we always say families first, but sometimes when you have a good storm coming in, I enjoy the storms. I used to be out in the field, but now I'm in the office monitoring it, talking to Chief Olson and other mayor or the fire chiefs from other towns, telling them what's coming in and stuff like that, so, I mean, it's, you have to listen to what your crews telling you out in the field, and you have to trust them. It's a lot of big, it's a nice time commitment that you give back to the city.
Obviously, you trust yourself, too. I mean, you make difficult calls and choices.
Uh, yes.
Guess what? Tell Burns to tell the people, "Go home because there's something brewing."
Yes.
And, or the chamber, "I'm sorry, I know you've paid for the ban, but, oh, you know what's gonna break loose? You've got twenty-three minutes to clear the area."
Correct, and that did happen this year.
Yes, it did, yeah.
And...
Of course, you're making that call from six blocks away, so.
It's a...
Can't we Skype your image onstage?
Uh, no. No. Yeah, it's a, you always gotta think of safety of the citizens first.
Yeah. Well, you said it's sometimes, you know, family comes first, and sometimes you've missed opportunities with Babette, but surely, you consider the city of Geneva and its citizens and all those who visit your family as well.
Oh, yes.
So, to, you know, to make certain people aren't in harm's way is obviously a passion of yours, so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
It's been. I mean, the Geneva Fire Department, they've been outstanding to me and my family, and the police department, they're just like one of me, one of us. I mean, they, we all bond together and...
Absolutely.
Make decisions and stuff like that, and that's why I can't, I love working with the police chief and the fire chief because of the group of core people that we have.
Right.
Which is nice.
Well, it's all a lot because of you.
Appreciate that.
Very much so. Any additional comments from the council, from Mr. Warfel? Anyone from the audience care to comment on this extraordinary young man? How many more years left, big guy?
Maybe fifteen.
Fifteen more?
Yeah, hopefully.
Wow. Now, 'cause during your regular job, you drive trucks.
Yes, I'm unemployed.
Yeah.
I'm a heavy equipment operator and drive trucks for a living.
You gotta be exhausted.
Not all the time.
No?
Sometimes, but not all the time.
The real question is, Babette, what are you gonna do if he doesn't do this for God's sake?
I think I'll enjoy just now.
And when is the, when is your wedding anniversary?
July 18th.
Okay. We'll make certain that off, off next year. How's that?
It'd be nice.
And then, Mr. Singer wants to pay for dinner. Place of your choice, and Mr. Bruno will buy flowers for Babette. I do have a plaque for you.
Cool.
If I may present it. This is really cool, man. The Chiefs put this baby together. It reads Certificate of Appreciation. The certificate is here by award at the Dale Warfel in recognition of thirty years of dedicated and distinguished service to the city of Geneva, signed by Scott Spencer and myself. May I present this to you?
Ooh, look, it's photo time. Let's go up here, we get away from the snake.
Yes.
It's an ocean fire, isn't it?
More like...
I should be racing, I have a heat arm, so I'm gonna fall.
That's right.
Are you gonna get Eric?
Got it.
Oh, look at this guy. Thank you, brother.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now we can all enjoy the mass exodus. Thank you all for coming out to support Dale, for all his years of supporting us. Happy anniversary early. Item 3D is to proclaim October 5 through 11, this week as Fire Prevention Week. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second by Cummings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. We have a nice proclamation to give to all the firefighters who left. Item 3E, well, we do have a department report, but I know that Mary wanted to touch on what's on the screen right now, but I'll have to give some time to a guest in the audience as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may have noticed a PowerPoint slide program that's up on both screens, and I just wanted to give a little background and a little credit to our communications coordinator, Kevin Starr. This is Geneva, a Picture Perfect Community presentation. During last winter's snowstorm, we were putting out updates on virtually a daily basis, as you may recall, regarding snow plowing and dangerous weather, the polar vortex. Attempting to break the monotony, Kevin posed a question on Facebook, asking residents how they were coping with the harsh winter, including sharing their photos with us. The community's response was better than expected. What was expected to be a one-weekend diversion from the terrible weather turned into much more. We had parents taking photos of their children, playing outside, building a snowman or an igloo, sledding, scenic shots of the Fox River and snow-covered bridges, and even how pets were buried and bundled up dealing with the snow and the cold. Kevin posted these photos on the city's website, Photo Gallery, and on Facebook, which generated a number of views, positive comments, and even more photo submissions. The response was positive because it allowed the city to interact with residents in a lighthearted, feel-good manner while showcasing many of the reasons why people love living in Geneva. He continued the resident photo call-outs in the spring and summer, even using the city's quarterly newsletter and Geneva Mail to promote more entries. We've also used the enticement that some of the best photos submitted to us will serve as the city's Facebook cover photo for a few weeks. The Picture Perfect Community idea gave residents and visitors to our website and Facebook page a chance to see Geneva shine, bloom, and celebrate with our festivals during the warmer months. The city received thirty-seven resident photo submissions in the spring and sixty-one during the summer. While fall is only a few weeks old, we've already had at least twenty-three entries as of last week. Due to the popularity of photo sharing, Kevin launched the city's Instagram account in late August as another way to connect with residents. Instagram is strictly a photo-sharing social media platform. This has provided another avenue for residents to easily share their seasoned photos with us from the convenience of their smartphones. The Photo Galleries have proven quite popular on our website, drawing hundreds of additional clicks for each month. Residents and visitors may be more tempted to visit each other areas of our website to find information of what else there is to do in our community. These photos have provided us free marketing opportunities to highlight what makes Geneva special. They also present another side of the city, that we are not just about ordinances, permits, zoning, regulations, et cetera, and shows that our government cares about our residents and their quality of life. As a result of programs like this and regular communications with our community, we've also boosted our followers on our social media accounts in recent months. Subscriptions and overall totals for Facebook equal 5,663 email addresses. On Twitter, 3,083, and on Instagram, 125 already, and it was only launched August 28th. This also helps reach a wider audience when we need to get out important alerts, news, events, and service information. We hope you enjoy the photos, and we plan to bring you a new batch to see every quarter from the previous season. Thank you.
That's really cool. So, anyone can submit the photo, or a photo?
Mm-hmm.
Just shoot them off? Yeah, let's wait. Very nice. Valerie Byrd, welcome. Ms. Byrd handed out some materials to all of us earlier this evening, and she called me earlier and said she'd be swinging by to say hello, so, welcome and hello.
Hello. I just wanted to stop in this evening and introduce myself. Some of you know me. I was the mayor of Yorkville for four years, and before that, I was on the Yorkville City Council for nine, and I served one year as president of Metro West, and...
And we're celebrating ten years this year. Can you believe that?
Yes.
Metro West.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to be there.
Yeah.
Have another event I have to go to.
I'm sure you do.
Yes, quite a few, but I'm running for state representative in the 50th District, and although there's only a small part of your community in that area, west of Randall Road, most of it, I still wanted to stop in and just familiar, let you know a little bit about me. My day job, I do community guides, and this was one of the ones, my husband's a professional photographer, and I am a former newspaper person. I was editor at Naperville Sun for several years, for that reporter, and for a while, I worked for Clubesque and Associates, which is just, was just on the road in Batavia, so I've done community guides for Yorkville, Kendall County, Plano, Montgomery, mainly Sugar Grove, not anything any farther north, but I hope to expand, and the Conservation Foundation. I've been talking to them, and they're going to be doing an updated version of this after the first of the year. So, I brought this along because this is one of my favorite accomplishments, and I know that you are very interested in conservation, and I, that's all I had to say. Thank you for having me tonight. I've been walking around the 50th District for the last four months, stopping in from time to time at different city council and village board meetings, just to let people know that I'm out there and that I'm somebody who does know what kind of issues you're dealing with, and municipality and municipal governments are near and dear to my heart, so just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, and thank you for this. This is beautifully done.
Oh, this is my son, Alex.
Hey, Alex. I like page thirteen of the program where it talks about our rain barrels.
Mm-hmm.
Nice picture of Jay Womack from the NRC. Thank you again. Department presentation. Very exciting. Information Systems Administrative Services, Mr. Pete Collins comes from behind the door to say hello.
Good evening.
Welcome, sir.
I'm just gonna go through this very quickly. And more importantly, I would welcome questions more than anything. So, I've been doing IT here for the city since about 1999. Seen a lot of changes, as evidenced by tonight's things. Still sorting out some issues. I got it.
You got it?
Got it. So, the audio is now correct.
Did you get that note, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, so did I.
It's fixed now.
I just ran there.
I figured it out. Just undoing some, some of the stuff that was there, but pretty much the same. We've gone from largely nothing to where we are now. It's been very busy. It's been very busy, I guess is the easiest way to say it. Most notably on this, just off the top on the slide here, we have a new IT technician, Mitch Radman, and most importantly, that I can share with you, is he had a baby on Friday, so.
Oh, he did?
There you go, so.
Another daughter, correct?
Another daughter.
Excellent.
Daughter number three, so.
That's wonderful.
Hence the reason he's not here this evening, so. But, more or less, here's an overview of what we do. We maintain all of the computer infrastructure throughout the entire city, including all of the mobile, police and fire, all the servers, all the copiers, all the phone systems, whether they be mobile and/or at the desks, email and internet access, all of the network gear that we use to serve the school districts ourselves, the county, all the access points in all the buildings, all the firewalls, all the electronic ID systems that we use now to get in the building, Channel 10, when it's working correctly, and then we get to our negotiations with Comcast and AT&amp;T and all the legislation that goes along with that. It's, it's an awful lot of stuff, keeps it busy, never boring at all, always running Basically, I can tell you, since last time I was here, we were here in 2010, so last time, I think I gave you a presentation fairly similar to this. What we've done since then is all of our network backend, all our fiber optic gear, we updated all of that to a 10-gig backbone for, at the request of the school district, so we can move data pretty quickly across here. We were involved with the migration to New World from our old finance system, to your tedious project, not so much for me, but more so for Stephanie, but a lot of the backend, as far as updating and updating their system and updating and updating again, we handle that. We're involved with the new city website, a lot of the migration that went, work that went into that. Thankfully, these days, we don't touch it as much anymore. Kevin takes, handles most of that, most of the departments handle that, so that's taken that bit off of us, so we're thankful for that. In the past two years, we upgraded all the phone system, the backend of the phone system. In the past two years, we upgraded all the phone system, the backend of the phone system. We put in newer firewalls to stay up to date, and along with the Exchange email server that you guys all get your package through right now. We also, I guess during that time period, we completed another long-term Comcast franchise negotiation. So Stephanie and I spent a lot of time hacking through that. Trying to think, you know, that probably happened right after the last time I talked to you, in 2010, so it's been a while off on that. And we've added this ID door system in the timeframe too, so that's... We issue all the IDs for the city, they're all tied to IT, so. Upcoming stuff. Really, the point we're at right now is we're upgrading a lot of older equipment that we didn't replace when the economy tanked out, so we're really moving towards new desktops this year. That's the bulk of our work for the season. You guys got the first rollout of that. We do a lot of the Channel 10... We do all the recording for Channel 10. Some of you have already been through. Our song and dance, "The Mayor," and I spend a lot of time going business-to-business here. We have a pretty good time doing that with Business Beat, and that seems to be very popular. And really, the main issue that we're still trying to resolve, and it's still going on with the county as they build new fiber optic on their plant, is to get a redundant path to the fire station on the east side. That's really the biggest thing that we need to accomplish in all of IT. That's really the most important thing that we have going, so. Other than that, just a quick overview. More or less the same as what you saw before. This is what we handle, and this is what we do on a daily basis, both Mitch and I. We just go from location to location, site to site. If it's a problem, we deal with it, so. That's really all I got on the slides, because I'm not a big PowerPoint person. I'd rather have questions. I don't want to bore you.
Questions for Mr. Collins. Mr. Bruno.
Let's see. The video that we record here tonight, which apparently I'm not on, you're on TV right now.
Actually, what is on right now is the PowerPoint presentation was on. That was the extent.
The... What's the process, the lag time? Is there... Because that video is not available next day.
No.
Or is it...
For what?
Like, when can people watch?
So recording tonight, this will be... This is typically when we do these, these will be up... First thing I do when I walk in the morning is I rip the video, and it's usually up by that, the following day, the following evening. Because I usually don't have it done in time for the 1 o'clock showing. So by 7 o'clock the following night, it's usually it's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings, then Alderman Flanagan.
Can you touch on the agreement we have with the school district for shared resources?
Sure.
Sure. So we provide backbone services and internet pathing to a shared pipe that all the school districts use to get to the internet. Basically, it's a 10-year lease, basically a lease of the fiber and the equipment that goes with it. So in Kane County's case, we provide... Geneva provides fiber optic services to the school district and Kane County. In Kane County's case, we just provide them dark fiber, and in the school district's case, we provide them the actual fiber and the equipment on either end, so they don't have to maintain that. All of that trunks back to our internet connection and public safety, which goes out to the DuPage Tech Park. So while they don't pay us for the internet connection, they actually pay the Kane County for that. Kane County uses our path to get to there.
And saves everybody money, I'm assuming?
It saves them a lot of money. I don't know anywhere else... I mean, put it this way, the school district's agreement paid for a lot of the upgrade of the gear that we did last year, and I don't know with where they... what they spent, where you could get that kind of connectivity for what we charge them for. We basically covered our loss, and we've covered our costs, and that's about the extent of it.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Flanagan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned Comcast. Is there any competitors on the horizon, or are we continuing on with just Comcast as being our only provider?
I would say between Comcast and wherever AT&amp;T has chosen to serve in town...
So there is pockets of...
There are pockets that can get you verse, but every time I have prodded them in the past two years, as far as when is the rest of Geneva coming?
Right.
I don't have an answer, and they don't either. So I don't see anybody else coming in?
Okay.
At this point?
Google.
We tried, if you recall. If you recall, we did actually apply to be a Google server along those lines, so we could certainly have recently done that again, so.
Anyone else? Questions or comments for Mr. Collins? Alderman Simonean.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm watching 60 Minutes last night, and they had the head of the FBI on there.
Mm-hmm.
Says his number-one concern is cyberterrorism.
Yes.
That's our biggest vulnerability as a country. What's our vulnerability here?
We have very limited access into our networks. We don't allow... For the most part, we don't allow anybody in from the outside, other than through our mail systems. That's about the extent of it. Obviously, we have an exposure with our electric utilities, SCADA systems there. We spend a lot of time with both electric and water, watching those systems, paying attentions to the alerts. We get a lot of the same FBI alerts too. When that kind of stuff comes through, we get those as well. So do we have exposure? Yes. Do we work to mitigate it? Yes. We work very hard at mitigating it.
Thank you.
Alderman Flanagan.
Yeah, well, we have Sonic Wall, right? So shouldn't that level at least somehow deter anybody coming in?
Sure. We have firewalls blocking people trying to get in, and we've been hit with attacks in the past. We've actually, you know, we've had... The connection that we use to the internet actually is also shared with the school districts of all three cities, and in fact, just two weeks ago, St. Charles School District was getting clocked by a denial-of-service attack. So we do see these things, but as far as them getting into our stuff, we don't have anything on the outside really to get to. We lock it all down. We don't want people coming in. We don't... I don't want the typical... I don't want an electric utility typical employee coming in, being able to get into our network and get to the SCADA networks. So we just don't allow it, flat out. Which is why they come in.
That's our new chamber logo. We don't want people coming in. Ms. Dawkins.
Can you just talk a few minutes about all the upgrades we've just completed and kind of what our future is here?
Sure. Sure. So obviously, in front of you here, we've moved all these machines out here. The plan largely for this was not only to serve all of you, but the other boards and commissions as well. They also have needs for electronic packets. We look at this also as an ability to have a nice training facility as well, something we've never had either. So all of these machines can be used for that. Also in the back, I mean, we've added a couple cameras in here. I mean, I suppose I'm glossing over the obvious stuff. We upgraded a lot of the cameras in here. We upgraded, obviously, all the mics here. It's still a work in process, as you can see. Some of those LEDs are not working on the control panel. But largely, we're doing this to increase our ability to broadcast out, our ability to go live. Does that say enough?
I don't want...
Yes, and I'm sorry. Most importantly, I know this is all raised, all the work here on the dais. There are new chairs coming. I apologize, they're not here yet, but they are on the way, so you will not all look...
Like Tim Conway.
I figured I'd let you say that.
I have you sitting at my...
Exactly, so.
I know there's been discussion over the past several years about broadcasting all of our board and commission meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Their technology is available.
Sure.
The manpower is where we're lacking.
And that unfortunately is, you know, going back to the Comcast franchise agreements and the AT&amp;T franchise agreements, it's one of the limitations we have at the state level of what we can use franchise fees for. We can't pay for an employee to do nothing but video. We have to use those funds for equipment. We can't, you know, fund an employee who could sit here all the time.
Right.
Do every meeting.
Thank you.
But until they change that law.
Right. Alderman Bruno.
So is there any restriction in terms of just bandwidth? We can... Could we broadcast everything?
We can broad... We have open access to that channel. We can put on whatever we want. We've chosen so far, at this point, to just be a government and educational network. We don't have... If we had the staff, we could take on the Waynes Worlds or the...
Well, I'm not...
But we don't have that staff, and we don't have any way of funding that. That's the hangup.
So, and you don't want to come for plane commission and historic preservation and...
I enjoy all of you on Monday nights.
That's all you got to say. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We jumped down to item number four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be considered with one motion. Alderman Marx makes that motion, and Alderman Singer makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Malodra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonean?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number 10 is municipal bills for payment, whom we kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in aggregate for our consideration this evening.
Bills for payment total $2,195,005.85.
Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read the individual line items that total that amount can be found in tonight's city packet online.
Second.
Alderman Bruno, that was an extraordinary job.
I thought it's the first ward's responsibility to do that, right?
Clearly. This is if Chuck Brown was a ventriloquist, for God's sake. A motion offered by Alderman Bruno and seconded by Alderman Flanagan to pay the bills as presented and available in our packets and online. There is a second? Excuse me, any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Malodra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonean?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We jump down to item 12. 12A is to recommend resolution number 2014-77, appointing Hal Wright Director and Richard Babica... Oh, excuse me, alternate director as the city of Geneva's representative to the Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency Board.
Don't move.
Second.
Flanagan makes the motion, and Simonean makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Babica's with us this evening. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Rich. Please convey our thanks to Hal as well. New business, ladies and gentlemen? Any new business from any member of the council?
When are we getting the chairs?
They've been ordered. We were told mid-October, and then the shipping date was October 28th, so we're hoping that's the latest. Part of the issue was, is we couldn't order them until we knew the exact height of what this was going to be, so we do apologize.
Oh, no problem.
Bring your own phone book.
They're actually high chairs, which is going to be cool. So we got snack time. Anyone else, gentlemen? Anything you'd like to add?
Your roads all started showing up.
Oh, did it?
Uh-oh.
Is it stored over Randall Road there, so Mr. Marx can see it?
It's slowly passed here.
That's awesome, man. Big homecoming week this week for Geneva, so good luck to all the competitors. Nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Sino. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned, microphones are off. Microphones are off.